At this time, I would like to ask for a motion to move into the public hearing for the Truth and Taxation.
Oh. Sorry.
Huh? As the move is supported. All those in favor, please indicate for who. Ah, no, we'll call, I'm sorry.
Small.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Bremmend.
Yes. We have re-stressed the meeting proper and moved into the Truth and Taxation public hearing.
Oh, we didn't recess anything, we just did the hearing, didn't we?
You just opened the public hearing, yeah.
But we didn't recess anything. We're opening the public hearing.
Opening to the public.
Yeah.
Yes. Um. Comments from the board? Mr. Johnson, do you have any comments?
On what, the budget, or just the having?
Truth and Taxation Resolution.
Well, I think we've opened the public hearing, so any public wouldn't, and that would be applicable to public, so.
No, I was turning to the board first, then to the public.
Um, no, I don't have any.
Okay. Comments from the public? Anyway. There will be no comments from the, um. Those present, and to my knowledge, we've received no written responses. And on that basis, I believe that we can propose our public hearing.
Make a motion to close the public hearing. Sorry.
This consider the, uh, Truth and Taxation public hearing completed. And we will go back into regular session.
Yeah.
Pardon? Yep. Um. At this time, I would ask, um, for a motion to approve the Truth and Taxation Resolution coming twenty-four dash fifteen.
Are you not going to recess first?
Pardon?
Are you not going to recess and do this during your regular meeting?
Okay, yeah, one of our, there will be meeting in recess until further notice.
The meeting, well, we need a motion on that, and do we need a motion to close the public hearing?
She did that.
Okay.
You did.
Did her. Oh, I did motion, I did.
Yes.
Okay.
The motion to recess?
I don't think we voted at all, but we all agree we're going to close the public hearing, right? Okay. So now you're asking for a motion to go into recess for the regular meeting, for the special meeting. So.
Sure, recessing.
Okay. Of course.
I'm sure, like, I would welcome, if you wish to make motion, please do so.
Oh, my dear.
Okay. Of course. Those in favor of a recess? All right.
Hi.
We're in progress, we are now in recess until further notice.
So I didn't get a text, it looks like, yeah, he thinks twenty minutes.
Pardon?
He said twenty minutes. That was at eleven fifteen, so.
Okay.
Thirty-five, so maybe ten.
Second group, second cup of coffee, the second one.
Thank you, but if you think about it, uh, and there's a couple of dates, one is the seventeenth of May. It's the most exciting day every two years we have at home. We have Connie Whitelea. And what's the other day?
April twenty-sixth, we're having an electronic, uh, recycle, Elcon is sponsoring totally the electronic waste recycling, so there's no cost to anyone bringing their stuff, uh, with their flyers. Pardon?
No cost to the gate?
No cost anywhere. I picked up the, the recycle itself, uh, organization is, uh, floating alone on that to give back to the residents, and, uh, we'll have the flyers out momentarily, once I get them all.
Thank you for telling me what you do. And then remember too, the eighteenth is a very special day, because that's the day we loan those tires. And I, I put every tire in a truck myself. I know what you do. And I even got a new tractor this year to use. Thank you, I'll see you later.
I remember with Carla Travis, he would.
What's that?
I remember with Carla Travis, he'd those into the truck.
Yeah, we used a tractor, okay.
It was sucker so heavy and packed as a whole.
Full of water and sticky water. But it works now, so anyways, appreciate the thing, well, there's a little money in there, so we can keep the maintenance app a little better. Pregnant talked about a little bit, trying to maybe some snow machine that we could charge a little, a little bit more, give a little more money out of there, so. I'll work on that too. So, I appreciate it, thank you very much.
Thanks, Kevin.
You're the hardest working man.
And if you want a close session matter.
Yeah, close session at the end, yeah.
Uh, if it's any other matters, it's the chair, I got, um, yeah, the other matters would be the close session, for sure, the personnel requesting, also, um, if you want to do it now, we have interviewed for the building department manager, have a recommendation. You do that now, or at the meeting on Thursday, whichever you want.
Well, let's knock it over now, if it's over, you put that on, building department's. Close session at the end, building department manager. Um, after the public hearings, uh. So to have a public hearing, ask for public comment, right?
Pardon?
Excellent, you guys are right.
Drop should have resolution twenty twenty-four dash fifteen.
Seventeen.
Seventeen, that's the wrong number.
Seventeen is the wrong number on there.
Oh, seventeen, is it?
Yes.
I'm hardly just going to be in the hallway about a right out of transfer.
The only problem with changing anything today, we have to post it again for two weeks if we change what we posted originally. So these will changes will have to be made.
So if he wants to change his bottom line for.
He don't want to change the bottom line, he might have changed one of them.
If for twenty four. For twenty five, we can do that. Oh, we can do that. Yeah, we don't have to, sorry, never mind what I said. Okay, then, um. I guess we're at the point where we're correct me if I'm wrong, but we're gonna approve the budget for twenty twenty five to the point. Correct? I'll make the motion to approve the budget for twenty twenty five. Second for long start, move to seconded, let's discuss.
Oh, what do you mean? Well, I have my, my, um, issues with it, or documented, you guys know where I'm at. I feel like you don't need to be funding a position at this point. Um, we're in a pickle here, it can't really be addressed until next year on budget. Because if we were to change this budget now, we have to have two more weeks of public posting and hearing. So I guess my, um, I'm, I'm most likely to know on it. Um, however, I would like to see it suggested next year. Um, as far as the online item on the additional union position.
Would I get, uh, would we get guesses if we approve the act of tendency that we open the subject back up on the second?
Well, if, if we were, yeah, I mean, I would. We go back and follow through with personal policy is, which is personnel go through this thing, and we get a doubt description, talk about dollar amounts. And go through the whole process of what personnel policy shows, and I could give a look at that. For me, I, I, there's three other ones, so, right, I'm not, I'm the one guy here, I would be, yeah.
Well, for the state sake of the record. Then we should vote on the open, uh, one up to the table now. Does any further comment?
I, I'm not. I think we're too, way too much of the unbalanced, the balance is, and I have concerns about that. Um. I don't have a magic solution, no, nobody has time to think very carefully. Um. The magic solution wouldn't have been last summer to have grown a village to help us cover the cost of that. Do the things that we're trying to do to the county. That should be sailed. And, but I'm still displeased with the amount of that we are drawing in from the, um. Unbalanced. Um. What we're taking from the tax. Those that fund. I'm afraid the courts are going to call us in on that one. Um, not that we'll take yet, but, um, I think it ultimately could put the position of treasure in. A more challenging situation, maybe, um, when the courts say. We have to rely on money people, I mean, that is such a. The courts already have said, the property belongs to the county, period. There's no retribution, there's no going back, there's no, oh, you didn't pay your taxes, that's okay, we're going to reward you anyway. You didn't have to pay a real estate fee, you didn't have to pay any of those things, and you didn't pay taxes. I'm here, have this wonderful, gratuitous amount of money that the county has gone through all this effort and made for you. And the property that you were willing to sell in the first place, and gave up willingly. But that's a separate issue, um. It was biggest problem, and I have no problem with the treasures.
Well, okay, um, I would remind everyone that the fluid document and budgets are. Always capable of being scrutinized at any point during the year, so we can find different ways as far as, uh, if I. Hearing you correctly, you're talking about transfer with tax collection, Carolyn.
Mm-hmm.
Which is an acceptable rate that we've gotten from the treasure for the last four or five years, so I think that one shouldn't be a question so much. But, oh, anyway, yeah, that is a high, a high number, you're not wrong, um. But like you said, there's opportunity all year to work out to get that, uh, to get that, that, well.
Did we? Um, we had a trans, we had the budget transfer in for twenty four, correct? Oh.
How much, yeah.
How much did we budget for twenty four?
Perhaps.
Yeah, we're not at a point yet when we know what the.
My response would be, that's all the mortgage that we should pay.
Fifteen one oh three.
And we haven't utilized that yet.
Alright.
We got additional two thirteen possibly for twenty four, although it would help. But we'll see where that lands, like I said, fluid document, we're kind of go. But let's, um, let's, okay, any more comments on the first motion? We're on the first one, and then we'll call.
Johnson.
No.
Brumman.
Yes.
Brady.
Yes.
Small.
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. Anything else to do with that, Stephanie?
Oh, couldn't you do the non-generals?
Oh, yeah, but not generals, yes, absolutely. Uh, one little bit of doing one at a time, we just do it all in mass.
In mass, I think.
Yeah, so I'll make motion to approve non-generals.
Support.
In total, who supported, any discussion?
We did have two in public comment who were interested in us looking at the, uh, areas like. Um, increasing that we zeroed out our contribution from general fund, and we would do instead that they would like to see that. Some of that be put back.
Can you put that agenda for, uh, Thursday, um, second please?
Yes.
So my vocalization, that will only be the, when, as you said, fluid document, we're gonna keep that mind when we report.
Well, for the, uh. Let's talk about Tuesday for sure, since this is a private public comment, I think it's, uh, important I would do that. Any other comments? We'll call.
Small.
Yes.
Brady.
Yes.
Brumman.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes. Okay. What's next, Stephanie?
Um, the court appointed attorney contracts for twenty twenty five. Hailing contracts to not run through my DC yet, and, um, each year I come out to, I get to just probably enter into a contract with. Attorney Steve Eric, attorney Justin Wilson, and attorney Robert Pajewski, um, it is. We progress to, um, the contracts to go up two hundred and ten dollars from last year that isn't within the approved budget for twenty twenty five, actually wasn't still, we have. But my, we have to work it, so basically I'm asking the board to give the chairman permission to sign the contract that just.
I'm so moved.
Sorry, thank you. Move to seconded, any comments, concerns, questions? Roll call.
Brumman.
Yes.
Brady.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Small.
Yes.
You're going to leave the Stephanie here signature, it can hang up to the contract.
You can, it makes a clear, if you have the first. Don't get lost. Oh, I'm gonna sneak this in, uh, Craig just reminded me, we need to make resolution for the, uh. Board commissioners wages for the next four years. Resolution or just a motion?
Resolution.
Resolution. Oh, I'll make a, uh, motion for, well, I don't say.
Well, I, I didn't know, we had talked and get some, some consensus among the board members, I don't remember what you were kind of hitting that up to the number that was.
Well, I was thinking three percent for twenty five, but that's all, all the farther I got. And I had done a conversation with Stephanie about she's trying to set payroll up, and we talked about three percent for us for twenty five. But if you guys want to make any adjustments after that, well, you know, let's, let's talk about it.
What do I hear, two, two, one, two? Can I hear that?
I don't remember that, but.
Carolyn, I thought you brought it up that we couldn't, or maybe it was you hadn't, that we couldn't do a percentage for each year.
I don't.
To the best of my knowledge.
But what we can't, so what we couldn't do was just match whatever we do to the rest of the.
Correct.
We couldn't say that.
I just specifically.
Yeah, we just, just said it.
Yep.
In reading this, I didn't see anywhere where it said you could not do a percentage.
Yeah, so, but you couldn't, we couldn't link ourselves with the other elected officials over the data.
So agree then, straight three always here, I'm okay with that.
I make the motion. Pass the resolution, allow the board chair to sign that we set the commissioner wages for the next four years. In a, or to raise in increments of three percent each year. And that the board continues to, uh, receive the fringe benefit package at all, like the officials do. Sorry?
And do we do the per diems to get set right now too, or can we do that?
At your organization.
Okay, got it, right, I'll second that motion. More comments?
So the beams are as, will stay as they are there.
We'll determine that, uh, to dinner today.
I'm sure you can.
Yeah, the only thing it addresses is your compensation, oh, wait a minute.
Benefits.
Remember, and your benefits. No?
Somebody's gonna say that's compensation.
A member of the county board of commissioners shall receive the compensation and mileage reimbursement fixed by a resolution of the county board of commissioners.
So we can do that at the next meeting?
Yeah.
Oh.
A member of the, which is you, because you don't have one of those, but, uh, mileage reimbursement fixed by resolution.
Oh, like the mileage for the next four years too?
Just that you receive it.
Oh, receiving, okay.
Is that what we're saying, you have to do the per diem?
Well, let's do it to be safe.
Not a benefit, it's a, if you want it.
Compensation.
It's a compensation, so we gotta, so add on there. So I'm gonna amend it or add on to my motion, and I don't know what you guys had talked about, so I don't know what, um, eighty fifty. Continue the, the current per diem, that which patch is in the state, right, state route, wherever. This is a per diem, it's totally different, but. So I would add on that we, we continue with the per diem that we currently have at eighty and fifty, eighty full day, fifty half day.
Are you setting that for the four years?
Yeah.
Because it changes, it's the potential to changes every year with the county for per diem.
Oh, you can do that every, no, confused.
I'm talking the county rate, you have the option to change per diem for. But you're staying stagnant, if you stay with four years, just a question.
I'm okay with that.
Looking at our, our per diems are pretty minor, I mean.
Yeah, we just raised it a year ago.
Yeah.
Yeah, we did, we did. Well, I'll second that, the full motion that you just made, any more comments? Okay, we'll do a roll call.
Brady.
Yes.
Small.
Yes.
Brumman.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes. Okay, now let's talk about the adoption of the twenty twenty four dash seventeen. In your boilerplate, we do it every year. I'll make the motion to, uh. The resolution. Or move consecutive, any discussion? Roll call.
Small.
Yes.
Brumman.
Yes.
Brady.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes. Next up, uh, personnel recommendation, building department manager.
Sure. So. I'm not trying to explain everything, I'll read it as you get it. So at the request of the Alcoa Board Commissioners, Personnel Committee advertised for and received applications for the building department manager. After reviewing the applications, the committee interviewed one applicant, Dan Gauthier. The applicant was the only one who possessed the basic requirements and additionally demonstrated the good working knowledge of the office. He agreed with the description requirements and had many ideas to make the office run efficiently. He agreed to the board offer of twenty eight hours per week at a starting wage of twenty five dollars an hour. The personnel committee recommended that the board commissioners offer Dan Gauthier the part-time job of building department manager with a starting date of one six and one nine. Yeah, sorry.
We'll just second it, any discussion? Okay, then, go ahead.
I think we were, I think all of that as a motion is perhaps inappropriate.
So the motion would be that we recommend, as personnel, I'll recommend that the board commissioners offer Dan Gauthier. That, just that, not the whole thing.
Thank you.
Just the, the final sentence would be my motion.
Adelaide.
Okay, any more discussion? Roll call.
Brady.
Yes.
Brumman.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Small.
Yes. Motion carries.
We had a good interview with Dan, I just let the board know, that's really good ideas of how to maybe streamline, organize, and get some new deal on, so.
I know, actually, the question that I had asked for about blood. Has someone sat down and had a conversation with current? Or?
Personnel is not, I haven't, I don't.
Her life is wanting to be changed drastically. Or one.
Yeah.
I don't think that should be dislilled.
No, it's not dislilled. I'm not dislilled, they want.
I think it should make your life a little easier, yeah.
It may, but she may not feel that way.
I think the board is made to soon here to air somebody.
As we back, or to, or to, it is different, it will be inclusive. And the type of quality as you and me, I don't have it on board.
Has she voiced any community on this, it's been advertised, say everything, has she voiced any of you? Hey, Ron.
Um.
Okay, Karen, we're to, which one? Um. Okay, we're done, we're done with the close session now, or is there anything else that's on?
Do you, you want, um, last year you adopted a resolution for the general and non-general fund budget. So you want me to add that to the agenda once it's prepared and everything for Thursday? You drafted the budget, but it wasn't via resolution.
Oh, can we make that resolution right now, or does that?
You can make it right now.
Yeah, let's just be doing.
And then we can create it.
Because we don't do it right, unless we.
You have something to say, Joe?
Either way, doesn't matter to me.
I have nothing.
I want to make sure payroll can get run, that's what I'm worried about, for, I have all these boys here, I don't want to hold up that process.
Because Tina's waiting right now.
Yeah.
Decisions to. For decisions to be made from today's hearing, so I thought EMS was gonna be discussed.
Wait, the motion, I'm not sure exactly how the correct word goes here, but.
Hold on, EMS, we, we talked about EMS, didn't we?
You did.
We approved it, yeah.
So they, we, we had.
They're sticking to this, they updated one way, new numbers.
No, this was, last week you gave that to, you brought it out, and you posted it. You approved it, so it should have been given to, personnel should have given it to clerk's office for HR purposes. Um, you have not, you voted that, yeah, that was what you wanted to do, but we can't change it in the twenty twenty five budget.
Which is, right, well, that's.
So it has to be done.
It's getting paid like it is, even though it's not correct.
No, if they gave it to you, then that would be the impetus, because they're still on last year's wages.
Well, there is apparently a new, that's been a position that someone's been working as this second. Uh, it's in, above an E M T, and we don't even have a salary for it. And she's been working that, so she's gonna get paid whatever the regular wages are from this year.
Which would be twenty twenty four. They've got paid wages for that secretary of position in the whole year.
If it gets approved, or whatever, whatever this new rate's supposed to be for this position, there's no wage for it, so. I don't know if we'll have to go back retro, or.
The twenty twenty four, they're being paid. This week, this pay is from twenty twenty four.
Mm-hmm.
And two days of the next pay is twenty twenty four, which is two weeks away. So the twenty twenty five budget will be corrected. Or not.
Oh, I see.
Will change on the second or whatever day you choose to have meeting.
Because there was changes in the EMS budget, the one that we posted.
It was not posted because there, the budget was already posted two weeks prior.
On the old version.
They could not be amended. So we're just going off of the.
You're gonna pay, uh, twenty twenty four because the days that you're paying for are still twenty twenty four, that Tuesday will go to modify the, after we approved it today, right, it's fine, but what, Tuesday will go to modify that to the, what we agree to find what personnel got the degree of that.
Unless you wanna rescind your resolution and go ahead and withhold, withhold pay for that first payroll and.
No, no, I agree with that.
It'll only be the salary of employees, hourly will still get their hourly, cause they're based on last year's.
No, let's not do that.
She'd only have a slight upper arm.
I choose no upper arm.
Yeah.
Personally.
So, we'll just clear my mud up here. EMS did submit, to you or to, didn't submit to me, but finance is updated. Budget?
Last week.
Okay.
At the meeting.
Yeah, that was okay.
And we had already posted it.
Got it.
Which is, it's still okay.
So the budget that he even told, that he, that he presented.
He didn't present it, he just ended up.
Or submitted was read all the new. That do have it, and that's what this is here?
That's what I was getting.
Right, this is the new week, okay.
Okay. So, that being said. We're okay to do the resolution today, to the budget. Cause we can modify it to, on the third day. All right. So I would do a motion for resolution to approve and file adopt the point, uh, one to one to my budget. Move the second. Discussion, you know, making sure to red dictate that, uh, on Thursday. Or then, or, uh, change the budget, this fund to ten. Be aligned with what the personnel department and union agreed. But, but, the board, you need everybody. Any more discussion? Roll call.
Johnson.
Oh.
Brumman.
Yes.
Brady.
Yes.
Small.
Yes. What else we have?
So, um, step, given what we're doing on Tuesday, Thursday, right, we have a meeting Thursday.
Yep.
You want to deal with your request on personnel then?
Thursday.
Okay, let's do that.
Just submitting it.
Okay. So, uh, I would ask that we go into close session for a short period of time to discuss some a wage issue with a union employee.
I'll second. Move second to all's in favor. Hi, we'll go on the close.
Who made the motion?
I did.
Second?
Me.
My, but it's not you. Don't see this handle, because. Look at yourself, I didn't know what it was.
On our roster within the last three weeks. So I have the dollar amount per hour if we can add that in to the MOU if possible.
First all minute after the meeting today to meet with Scott.
While we do that, first I'll be with you. We're gonna tell you what's going on.
All right. What time do you think that would be approximately?
You guys want to do it immediately? We can go read that right now.
Okay.
Go grab and grade it. And then we got a meeting on Thursday that will make shifts of dollars.
Okay.
That's what we talked about, yeah.
Okay. That worked.
Any other public comment? Okay, then we'll adjourn until Thursday at what time please? 1:30 right? Okay, great. I'm gonna go make sure my clock, my calendar.